Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll begin our roll call.
Matthew Patinsky.
Sharon Warner.
Amy Carney.
Mike Sharkey.
And Donna Lewis are present. All right, notice is hereby given pursuant to ARS 15 34132 that a public meeting will be held on November 13th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the governing board room located at Coronado High School at 7501 East Virginia Avenue, Scottsdale, Arizona 85257. I'd like to ask Dr. Menzel to start us off, to give us a little background on where we are and why we're gathered.
Thank you, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, members of the governing board, and for all those who are here this evening. Tonight, we're here for a topic of conversation that none of us in the room ever wanted to have. Discussions related to closing or repurposing schools are never easy and are almost always the last resort as school districts wrestle with shifting demographics and budget constraints. So I want to begin by stating clearly and emphatically that the recommendation that I've brought forward to the governing board for consideration was not because of any failure on the part of any staff or families in these two schools. The recommendation was driven by both demographic and budget realities that require difficult decisions. On Tuesday next week, the governing board will hear an updated demographic study that reaffirms the declining enrollment trend that we've seen since 2010. As noted at the study session on October 28th, Scottsdale Unified School District has declined by more than 6,000 students in the last 15 years, and in that period of time, only Tonaliya Elementary is no longer open. We also outlined the $7.9 to $9 million structural budget deficit that must be addressed as we head into the next school year. Last fall, we restarted a grow or consolidate conversation that was initiated initially by Dr. Creek Guard in 2018 and 2019. Post pandemic, our focus had been on growing enrollment, but my last fall, it was clear that we needed to tackle the questions of excess capacity within the district and how to optimize our limited resources. District administrators met with leaders from schools with less than 450 students. With respect to Echo Canyon and Pima, both were given targets of growing to 350 by the end of the 2024-25 school year. Specific efforts were made to support marketing and grow enrollment. However, after this school year started, enrollment at both of the schools was below 300. For me, when looking at the enrollment trends over the past three years, and if you go back even to 2018, it was clear that both of these schools were on a path where it was going to be very difficult to reverse the declining enrollment trend. In April of 2025, when the governing board had a conversation about our enrollment strategies, there was a question asked about what the process would be like if we had to repurpose schools, and I noted at that time that if the board was going to consider closing any schools or repurposing them for the 2627 school year, the decision needed to be made by December of 2025 in order to give our families and our staff sufficient time to be able to respond to that decision. One of the things that I think is important to note is that, for example, in the case of Pima, 140 of the current 296 students are in Boundary. 193 in Boundary students from Pima choose other SUSD options. So it's a challenge of demographics and the choices that parents are making. If we have many schools open, many more than we can justify, given the declining enrollment over the last 15 years. The recommendation to repurpose Pima Echo Canyon was formulated after careful review of the data and understanding that this is phase one of a proposed two-phase process to right-size the district to be more in line with the number of schools necessary to serve the current population and what is anticipated in the future. Pursuant to statute, tonight, we will hear from anyone who wants to speak to this recommendation, but no decision will be made prior to the regular meeting on December 9th. I want to thank each one of you for showing up this evening. I want to express my gratitude for your willingness to share your opinions. These conversations aren't easy. They're not easy for me to recommend. They're not easy for parents and families who are impacted, but your voice matters, and you're an important part of the SUSD community. So I want to thank you for being here tonight. We pledge to work with our families regardless of what decision the governing board makes, because you matter to each one of us, and with that, I'll turn it back to the board president.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. We are now at 2F, our public hearing. The board will now hear from members of the public regarding the potential school closure repurposing. Please note that board members cannot discuss or respond this evening. The board will schedule a vote on this matter on December 9th. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Speakers must be present to provide comments and cannot yield their time to another individual. As a reminder, comments during the public hearing should address this proposed repurposing of Pima Elementary and Echo Canyon. If there are other comments, we have a regular governing board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 18th, and that's the best time to provide other comments. At this time, we have a list of many speakers. Thank you for being here. Yes? Item B, the presentation?
That was what I just did.
That was your present? Okay. Yeah, it's verbal. So we'll begin. What I'll do is I'll call the person who's going to speak first, and then the person who needs to be on deck, ready to go. And we'll start this evening with Rebecca Burkhart with Debbie Schumacher on deck.
Members of the board, I come to you today as a parent and a PTO member of three girls at Echo Canyon. A parent who's watched our school become family over the years. Echo Canyon is not just a bunch of buildings. Echo Canyon is where my own children and other children feel safe, seen, supported, and loved. I understand the need to balance a budget, but we're, but sorry, before we close two schools to save around $900,000 to a million dollars each, we have to look deeper. We're spending $2 million on individual programs like the Mandarin Immersion Program that, have they ever been fully evaluated for equality amongst all SUSD schools? Cost, participation, or long-term benefit? That's twice the amount that we'd save by closing two schools. If we're truly making decisions for students, shouldn't we start by auditing programs that cost millions of dollars before taking away schools that serve hundreds of children every day? Closing a school doesn't just save money on paper. It breaks apart communities, forces longer commutes, and erases trust, trusted relationships between teachers, students, and families. Once a school closes, we can't simply rebuild that sense of belonging. I'm asking you to take a fair, data-driven look at every program before making a decision that can't be undone. Let's find solutions that protect our children, schools, and don't eliminate them. Thank you.
Debbie Schumacher, followed by Blair Wilkins.
My name is Debbie Schumacher. I am Pima alumni, along with my daughter, and my eldest granddaughter is the third generation at Pima. One of her two younger siblings is set to attend this fall. The Pima community was blindsided, to say the least, that the board was considering closing Pima. Many thanks to the board members that have met with representatives of Pima over the last few weeks. Our community has presented strong arguments against closing Pima, ranging from the emotional turmoil to students, families, and staff, as well as that closing a new $18.1 million school that is rated A+ is not financially sound. You also are going to be incurring the additional cost of relocating students and losing additional students out of the district. I'm asking that the board please give Pima a two-year extension. We've already proven we can rally. We can come together and with the district's support, with an aggressive marketing campaign, we will grow. Tonight, several community members will present you different options to consider. We ask that you please consider all of those options before you make a final decision. Closing a school should be the absolute last resort. I don't believe that the board has looked at all of the possibilities of what we can do. Pima has changed over the years, including our mascot. This Generation Jones Pima Warrior is very proud of the millennial Pima Panther parents that have rallied together and come out to support our community. I'm also very proud of our Generation Alpha Pima students who cite the following daily motivational pledge of strength and unity. I am proud. I am inspired. I am motivated. I will achieve. I am Pima.
Blair Wilkins, followed by Kat Engelito.
Hello. I am here to ask you to address the remaining conversations about the future of Echo Canyon with the highest level of integrity. And remember that there are families and children that are immediately impacted on the decisions that we make and the actions that we take. I'm a parent of two Echo students, and I've served on the site council for a number of years there. I want to share and reflect with you the experience that this has had on me, my family, and my children. And I go back to September 29th as the day that the first domino felt like it was pushed. Scott Menzel came to Echo Canyon, stood in our cafe, and I learned three things. One, he was making a recommendation to close our award-winning school of choice. Two, he told us to be ready to enroll at a different school and open enrollment on November 3rd. Tavon was close and had room. Three, when asked to expand on the rumored conversations about a partnership between Hopi, the school two miles away from Echo Canyon with a waitlist, he wasn't going to explore any further because he couldn't promise the Hopi families that Echo Canyon could meet their culture and offer a Western days. Yet, when we asked if Tavon could welcome Echo Canyon and meet our culture and include our community, he was confident that they could. I do have to wonder if it's because those are two Title I schools. A recommendation is not a decision. Yet, how could the educators and families that left that night make decisions for our futures based on our own experiences at Echo Canyon and with our hearts? After scheduling the study session, ultimately this public hearing, things happened fast. The dominos were falling. We need to slow this process. We need to remember we are setting a precedence with what we do and how we do it. We need to respond to the challenges that we face with integrity and remember that ultimately neighborhood schools don't recover once they're closed, and neither do the communities that they're in. Thank you.
Kat Engelito, followed by Morgan Cain.
Good evening. I'm Kat Engelito. I stand before you tonight to address the critical proposal to close Pima Elementary, a decision that I believe is both very short-sighted and fiscally very unwise. Pima Elementary is not a struggling school by any means. It is a district asset that must be protected and grown. It is the only A-rated elementary school in the Coronado learning community. Furthermore, it operates a state-of-the-art facility constructed in 2019 using our lovely $18.1 million taxpayer funds. Closing this brand-new, high-performing building is a betrayal of the community's investment and trust. Pima is essential because of its specialized programs. We are the only elementary school in SUSD with the K-2 ABC program and one of only two with the Critical Success Program. We are a destination for families seeking specialized learning, not a facility to be shuttered. I must address the lack of effort. Pima was explicitly discouraged from marketing itself at the SUSD Expo. What happened? We need to reverse this negligence. I'm not asking for a reprieve. I'm asking for a strategic plan. I request that Pima be granted the same opportunity given to other schools, the two-to-three-year Dedicated Growth Program to market our strengths and Equitable Reboundary to stabilize our environment. Governing board members, you were elected to protect the education of our children, and I implore you to honor that promise by voting against the closure of Pima Elementary School and to vote for a path of strategic growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Morgan Cain, followed by Jake Davis.
Good evening. I'm a Scottsdale homeowner and an SUSD parent and employee. Echo Canyon shaped my family from my son's love for culinary and gardening to my daughter's self-confidence and leadership skills. It's also where I learned that I wanted to change careers and become a teacher. We live in the Pima Boundary, so part of the problem, but chose Echo Canyon in 2016, then ALC, because of its tight-knit community, multi-age model, which evolved into Looping, and its rich garden program. What will happen to our gardens? And the partnership with Blue Watermelon Project as Chef in the Garden Hub, will the expansive sustainability and circular food economy programs be able to continue to be utilized? I was inspired to bring Chef in the Garden experience to my pre-K class at Yavapai and want this to stay a big part of SUSD. Perhaps there's opportunity for the hub at Echo Canyon to remain, maybe offering field trips to the Echo campus. May I remind you of the prestige this has brought to our district, thanks to visits from people like Alice Waters and from SUSD's first designation as a Blue Zones-approved school, which I know you love. While more campuses are adding gardens, it will take years for them to be replicated to this caliber. Now, we understand that Desmond will need to make a different choice than planned. He hoped to stay at Echo for middle school, even though his sister attends Single Side. We are lucky to have a choice in Scottsdale, but do believe the volume of choice in SUSD will have to change. To think that we can navigate forward without being directly impacted is unrealistic. The entire district and community will feel the impact of the decisions you make. I am not asking you to keep our schools open as they stand today, which likely will make a good amount of my peers squirm in their seats, but we have to face the music. None of us want it to be us, and it's time to move SUSD forward in a fiscally responsible way. In doing so, I charge you to think logically, conservatively, and without bias. Please consider all scenarios before making changes, make those that use common sense, have longevity, and make the district stronger. Ultimately, let's not have these conversations anytime soon.
Thank you. Jake Davis, followed by Kathy Bree Tompkins.
My name is Jake Davis. I've attended Cochise, Coca-Pal, Mojave, and Suaro. My kids are third-generation SUSD. Your entire campaign was built on promises to protect SUSD, keep our schools open, and to stand by this community. Ms. Donna, you promised that we would have a closure budget committee in place. Can we expect that committee within twenty-six days like you promised to protect SUSD? Mr. Sharkey, you're quoted saying, "Our neighborhood schools are the backbone of our community." If that's how you feel, are you going to protect SUSD? Mr. Petinsky, you said we have a vested interest in protecting and improving our neighborhood schools. Will you protect SUSD? Scott Menzel has put us all in an impossible position. His inability to problem-solve is embarrassing. His lack of transparency and creativity makes it impossible for you to fulfill your promises you made to this community. You're nothing more than collateral damage to him, just a group of volunteers that get in the way of his objectives, just like us parents. We still haven't received any information from you, Scott, not one piece of data that justifies closing these schools. You looked me in the eye last week and said you had it, and I guess we'll wait next week for it. You failed to comply with State Statute ARS fifteen dash three forty-one, which requires transparent reporting. I will be contacting the Auditor General. This community deserves facts, not silence. This would have been productive segment in your latest podcast if you knew the definition of transparency. The truth is, you don't value families of SUSD. You mock us. You've targeted us. This time, you have failed to intimidate us. You've costed SUSD over two hundred thousand dollars in lost settlements, violated open meeting laws. You are the bad press of Scottsdale schools. You are the reason families are leaving Scottsdale schools. You're a bigger failure than Burwell. That's your best accomplishment to date. Your forever legacy: failure. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Bree Tompkins followed by Lisa Dinglinger.
I'm Kathy Bree Tompkins, and I'm a Scottsdale native and alumni of Pima and the Coronado Learning Community. A Pima parent three times over, and I'm also an employee of our beautiful city. Pima is the only A-rated elementary school in the Coronado Learning Community, and if you choose to close Pima, you're essentially signing Coronado's execution papers. I would like to thank the board members that have responded to our emails, have taken the time to meet with us, parents and community members, or plan to take the time. I appreciate everything that you're doing and that you are taking your positions as elected stewards of this community to heart. We're going to hear many great things about Pima. I would like to focus specifically on the five-year Twenty-First Century Grant that Pima was recently awarded. This half-a-million-dollar grant would be lost if Pima's closed. It provides free summer camp, family math and literacy nights, and it also provides before and after-school programming, again, for free. It's a tremendous help for working parents, and it gives families the opportunity to drop kids off as early as seven-thirty AM and pick them up as late as four-fifteen PM. Not only that, but these programs provide our students with many various learning opportunities. There's a bunch of art, such as drawing clay, sewing, jewelry-making, watercolor, crochet, and origami; technology classes such as computer lab, coding, and graphic design, which recently won an award from the district for designing a cover for the Arizona Department of Education; academic support classes, reading, homework help, AAS, A test prep, and math; and various fun activities that show kids how to be healthy and just be good community members. Programs such as these are what make being a single mom working.
Thank you. Thank you. Lisa Dinglinger followed by Adrian Bass.
I know you've heard how Pima Elementary isn't just a school, it's a sixty-six-year-old cornerstone in the community. Please consider carefully. Closing or repurposing Pima isn't just a logistical decision. It risks eroding trust and stability in a time when we need vision and bold leadership. While Scottsdale's overall population is growing, our district's enrollment has dropped, and Dr. Menzel, you had mentioned six thousand students. Meanwhile, nearby charter schools have added well over five thousand schools since 2010. These alternative networks continue to expand, and families are leaving. They want choice, rigor, and innovation, and they're finding it elsewhere, not in SUSD. Repurposing schools is a short-term fix, and as enrollment declines, the district still owes the same debt, but with fewer students, generating state funding. That makes the budget worse. Competing with charters, online learning, and homeschooling requires a more strategic long-term strategy. The district's Strategic Enrollment Planning Study shows parents are choosing alternatives for stronger academics, discipline, policy enforcement, and specialized programs. That can change by restructuring, not shrinking. Pima restructured as a small-school model, backfilled with early education community classes or a hub renovation, those are some strategies. These align with what we're trying to accomplish. District's, closing schools sends the wrong message and creates distrust in the district. The governing board was elected to protect the education of our students and not close schools. Let's leverage our resources to create programs families will actively seek for better financial support. Personalized learning, advanced coursework, and strong extracurriculars are some examples, and simply reallocating students to other schools isn't enough. Our schools must maintain quality and capacity. Let's make Scottsdale Unified the first choice, not the fallback. It's our moment to lead with creativity, not in contraction. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Adrian Bass followed by Sabrina Messinger Acevado.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Adrian Bass. I am alum, and I chose to work for the SUSD. Pima is working. We are an A-rated, Title I, minority-majority, success campus. We are working. Keep Pima open to continue serving our South Scottsdale community. Mr. Sharkey, Dr. Lewis, and Dr. Petinsky, you ran your campaign on the promise of keeping schools open, giving transparency to budget cuts, and not playing politics. Now is the time to keep those campaign promises. There are several ways to reduce the budget while keeping Pima open. We could create a small-school environment and staff accordingly. We could encourage retirement or buyout incentives for teachers that are at or near eighty points. We could downsize district administration to reflect our population. We could have a budget committee generate ideas to keep budget cuts away from the classrooms. We could sell outdated or redundant technology. And lastly, we could interview students and families who return to us from the charter schools and celebrate all the reasons that they come back to the SUSD. We cannot grow our numbers if we close schools. Pima is working. We are an A-rated school with a minority-majority student body. We are Title I, and we host the Success Program. We're doing everything right. Give us a growth plan to continue serving the community and welcome more neighborhood kids into this outstanding, outstanding campus. Please keep your promise. Keep Pima open. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Sabrina Messinger Acevado followed by Ryan Acevado.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Messinger Acevado, and I'm a Pima parent and Pima alumni. Pima is more than a school, it's an A-rated diverse learning community, offering specialized programs that meet the needs of every student. This combination of educational support does not exist anywhere else within the Scottsdale Unified School District, or more than just enrollment numbers. Pima is the only elementary school in Scottsdale with the K-2 ABC program, providing academic, behavioral, and communication support for our youngest learners. These early interventions set the foundation for long-term success. We are also one of only two schools with the Success Program, students utilizing comprehensive coping education strategies, which helps children manage emotions, regulate behavior, and succeed socially and academically. Closing Pima could create hardships for families who rely on these programs. Many would face long commutes or be forced to leave the district to secure the education that their children need and deserve. Our teachers deliver targeted interventions in math and reading, while our Gifted Program offers rigorous individualized learning. Pima proves that excellence and equity can thrive together, and no student is left behind. The district invested eighteen point one million dollars from taxpayers to rebuild Pima. Closing it now would not only remove accessible, high-quality education from our community, but also waste a state-of-the-art facility designed to serve students for decades. When board members Sharkey, Lewis, and Petinsky campaigned, each promised transparency, community involvement, and commitment to keep schools open. Yet with less than a month before the final vote, our community has had little meaningful dialogue. Closing schools should not be a starting point but a last resort. Afford Pima a two-year growth plan, keep your promises, and advocate for our schools. Thank you.
Ryan Acevado followed by Allison Dolan Troop, forty-five oh seven.
My name is Ryan Acevado. I'm a father of a Pima student. When Sharkey, Lewis, and Petinsky campaigned for this board, each promised not to close or to fund our schools. Yet here we are, blindsided by a proposal with little transparency or data. Repurposing Pima makes little financial or strategic sense. This elementary school's been around since the late fifties, and at the same time, it's a modern campus, representing an eighteen point one million dollar investment of our tax, of our tax dollars just a few years back. Instead of dismantling a thriving, diverse, A-rated school, I urge you to look internally to address budget challenges. Pima has the infrastructure and capacity to support long-term growth unlike many older schools in the district. It's hard to justify shutting down one of the, one of our newest schools while continuing to fund aging buildings. You owe it to our community to allow our children to benefit from this state-of-the-art facility. Closing Pima would waste this investment and further erode the community's trust. Closing schools, especially without a budget committee meeting, is a short-shighted and irresponsible. It will drive more families towards private schools, again worsening both the enrollment and funding of the SUSD. Closing schools would be, closing schools should be a last resort, not a starting point. Please provide Pima with a two-year growth plan and the resources, because Pima's a, because Pima is not a failure, it's a success story. Keep your promises, do not close Pima, and protect our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Dolan followed by Jessica Scordo. With Troop Forty-five oh seven.
Hi, my name is Ansley McKnight.
Can we put the microphone? Let's put the microphone next to your mouth there. There you go.
Hi, my name is Ansley McKnight. We are a scout troop from four-five oh seven from Pima Elementary School. I've been at Pima since I was a little girl and now a young lady. Pima did nothing to you, so you should do nothing to Pima. Pima has great teachers and great academics. There are many other amazing things at Pima Elementary School. Here are some of our favorites.
Hi, I'm Kylie Ramirez. I think we should not close Pima because all the teachers and staff are so nice, and they don't just help you learn, but they help you grow as a person. And what did Pima ever do to you? Save Pima.
Hi, my name is Madison Dolan, and I love the PTL events. I like all of the teachers, and Ms. Marks is my favorite. And my mom used to go to Ms. Marks for a second-grade teacher.
We also have a great community with excellent teachers and kind and respectful students.
We are Pima. Pima stands for I am proud, I am inspired, I am motivated, I will achieve, I am Pima. Save Pima.
Thank you.
We also would like to give you friendship bracelets as well. They say friends forever.
Thank you. All right, we, thank you. We have Jessica Scordo followed by Kim McClure.
Good evening, members of the governing board and Dr. Menzel. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your time, thoughtful questions, creative thinking, and careful consideration during this process. My daughter is a fourth grader at Echo Canyon. Our family has been part of the Echo community, Echo Canyon community since my oldest enrolled in preschool. For eight years, Echo has been our home. While the thought of my daughter not finishing her elementary years at Echo is sad, I've been very much aware of the declining enrollment problem Echo Canyon has been facing and understand change is inevitable. While some may want to share their frustrations, anger, and place blame, I am finding myself in a place of eagerness to move on and plan for what the upcoming school year will look like for my daughter and our family. I appreciate the district's effort to find this best options, excuse me, best option for repurposing Echo Canyon. However, none of the options I've heard will be the right fit for my daughter. Any version of an arts academy couldn't be more opposite of my daughter. We have enjoyed our time at Echo, but what we have enjoyed most is that it's home. A wise principal recently reminded me, while on my search for a new school, I needed to find a fit for my daughter that feels like home. I can't pick her future based on a building. So while we love Echo, what makes it home is the people who show up and make it special every day. My ask of you is that you follow through with the promise you made to our families, that the transition to our new schools be seamless and every student finds their new home. Be clear in your communication through the entire process. Ensure all families are aware of the timelines, choices, and opportunities they have to make the best possible decision for their children. Equally important is the matter of our staff, the dedicated educators, support staff, and administrators who care for our children every day. I ask you to please ensure that these individuals are placed in a school where they wish to work, where they can continue to flourish and find your joy in serving SUSD students. Lastly, as a parent, Scottsdale homeowner, and an SUSD employee, I ask that you keep the forefront of the financial implications of this choice, the budgets, operational efficiencies, and the long-term commitments. As I listened to the study session, it was stated many times that the decisions you make now will impact the next decade. Both of my children will experience implications of the decision you make for the rest of their lives.
Thank you. Followed by Amber Draina.
Hi, I'm the parent of a junior at Arcadia and a recent Arcadia graduate who is currently a freshman in college. The situation that SUSD is in right now is very difficult, and as a parent, I cannot imagine what it would feel like for my children's school to be repurposed. The situation is not happening due to suboptimal marketing strategies, negative perceptions of curriculum by parents or community members, specific financial decisions over the past few years, or any misuse of funds. It is happening because demographic changes are driving decreases in enrollment. These demographic changes are not unique to SUSD. Not only are other districts in the valley having these same conversations happening here tonight at this public hearing and for the same reason, but they are also happening well beyond Arizona's borders. When I was growing up, I went to public school in three different states. All of the districts I attended are dealing with or have recently dealt with declining enrollment, and they are thousands of miles from SUSD. Because we moved so often, I ended up attending three different elementary schools, and the one where I remember learning how to read has been repurposed in a way that is similar to one of the ideas under consideration for Pima. Declining enrollment is happening all over the country, and so is school repurposing. Last year's graduating senior class, the Class of 2025, was the largest graduating class for the foreseeable future. This is already impacting higher education. And what this means is that the genesis of the demographic-based declines in enrollment that we're all dealing with right now began around the time when current SUSD high school students, like my junior, were being born. There is no stopping or fixing the problem that SUSD is facing right now. There is only adjusting to our new reality while remaining focused on giving our kids a quality education. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Draina followed by Kristin Cuaron.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Amber Draina. I'm a Pima parent, and I'm here to talk about what we lose if we close down Pima Elementary. Pima is not an ordinary school. It's a specialized education hub. We have programs, K-2 ABC programs, as well as a Success Program, that my daughter has successfully navigated through. These programs give the children the tools to manage emotions, regulate behaviors, and succeed both academically and socially. Without these programs, I do not feel that she would be successful in her journey. And she's also part of the Gifted Program, where individualized learning ensures that students get, excel academically, as well as they're being inspired. She is actually reading at an eighth and ninth grade level, as well as the math level, and she's only in the fourth grade because of these programs. If Pima closes, I just worry about what her future is, and as well as the students that are in these programs as well. Will they be split apart? Are they going to be starting all over again with new, with new support systems? We thrive so- We thrive so well, and to start all over again in the fifth grade is just, I feel like it could be detrimental to not only my daughter, but to a lot of other students that have thrived under these conditions. So closing Pima just doesn't shut doors, it affects families, and it dismantles systems that are built that have contributed to the success of our students. So I think Pima represents what a public education should be: inclusive, innovative, and deeply rooted with community. And so I ask you, for the sake of every kid that's found their home in Pima and their community, to vote no for closure and give us a chance to keep doing what we do best and build those meaningful relationships and help our students grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Guerin, followed by Dr. Janelle Dansky.
Good evening, governing board members. Related to making Echo Canyon an early childhood education center, how much will you really save by eliminating the K-8 grade levels? Are those savings worth displacing the student population and potentially losing them and their future siblings to their home district or a charter school? By expanding the early childhood offerings and keeping the current K-8 structure, you can keep siblings together and put a renewed focus on rolling those additional preschool students up into ECS kindergarten and beyond. A school that is bustling with students translates to a better-maintained and utilized campus instead of falling into disrepair. There is no reason the community ed cannot provide financial support under this model. There are other options I hope you are considering. In Arcadia, SUSD's biggest competitor is Veritas, which is full and has a waitlist. Have you considered a traditional model that would likely attract new students to the district? Or an accelerated academy that could house Arcadia's CGP, gifted students, and students who may not test as gifted but are academically advanced? Have you evaluated the most recent survey results that indicate the programming families are most interested in? There is nothing that precludes you from having discussions related to enrollment, educational programming, increased offerings, or generating revenue. It seems odd to me that before having these discussions, administration jumped to a decision to close schools as if that was the only option. You do not need to close a school before you can discuss how to improve it. This process continues to feel extremely rushed. I hope that by December, you have received all the information you need to make a sound decision. Closing schools is not something that can be done on a whim, but rather, it is a process that needs to be strategically planned and well-communicated in order to gain buy-in and build trust within your community. It takes more than three months and a one-time parent discussion. The decisions you make will have a lasting impact, not just on Pima and ECS, but on all SUSD schools, your students, their families, and your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Janelle Dansky, followed by Ellie McKnight.
I'm here tonight to urge the board to repurpose Echo Canyon and Pima elementary schools. Schools are the heart of a neighborhood. They bring communities together and shape our identity, and that's why this recommendation is difficult. We cannot ignore the severe financial crisis our district is facing, or the need to cut $8 to $9 million from next year's school budget. We are simply out of time. This is not about effort. These are schools that have had growth plans. My colleagues have worked tirelessly for multiple years to grow enrollment at Echo and Pima, and have built tremendous programs and learning opportunities for students. This is about demographics, something no amount of dedication can change. It's time for SUSD to right-size the district in response to Scottsdale's declining school-age population, driven by rising housing costs and lower birth rates. This is not a reflection of the quality of our schools or the work we do with students. If we keep Echo Canyon and Pima open, the impact on the rest of our district will be significant: deeper cuts to programs, services, and staffing in all remaining schools. Thank you for considering what I know is an incredibly tough decision, but a necessary one for the long-term health of our district.
Thank you, Dr. Dansky. We now have Ellie McKnight, followed by Holly Martins.
Hi, I'm Ellie McKnight. I live in SUSD and currently have two children currently enrolled in the district. One is at Pima. I'm asking the Scottsdale Unified School District Leadership and Governing Board to be innovative in their thinking and budgeting with input from all stakeholders, making sure we have a closure budget committee prior to closing or repurposing a school. This is a promise that one board member made to the public. We in SUSD cannot make excuses to shut down neighborhood schools. ECA vouchers and charter schools have been a major excuse given by various leadership and board members for the decline of enrollment. We need to pivot and be innovative, not close neighborhood schools. Neighborhood schools is what Scottsdale Unified School District was founded on. Most families choose charter schools for personalized, innovative education, the smaller class sizes, the ability of instructors to cater to unique learning styles of the students. Families choose charter schools for this enriching activities and family engagement that these schools bring. This is Pima. This is what we are. We actually got a mailer out today from Nora Webster saying, "Pima, we have you. We have your back." Scottsdale Unified School District right now does not have our back. Use Pima as a pilot program for the small school structure. Backfill it with early childhood education or administration. Pima is a community school that is A-rated by the state. The leadership and the governing board needs to protect our current students, protect our neighborhood schools, and not close schools. This was promised by many of you up here, leadership that we could trust. The community of Scottsdale does not want to lose Pima. Pima families do not want to lose their community hub. Please help protect our schools and our students' education. Keep Pima open and pilot the small school model.
Holly Martins, followed by Carter Warner.
Hello, my name is Holly Martins, and I'm a proud Pima parent. I'm here to urge you to reconsider closing Pima in its current form. You have already heard so many wonderful things about our school and community that's been around for 66 years. I don't think there's any question about how much this community loves Pima. From what I've learned over the last couple months, this proposal seems rushed with no clear plans or alternatives. Closing schools seems like the easy way out. I understand that you can't ignore the bottom line, and enrollment is decreasing in the district, but closing schools should be the very last resort. An $18 million investment was made in the school, and to close it before exploring every option feels irresponsible. There must be a better way, and I believe that you'll find a way to keep our schools open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carter Warner, then followed by Emily Bonier.
Good evening, my name is Carter Warner, and I'm a student teacher in my final semester at ASU. As a pre-service teacher, I had hoped one day to work for the district that I was once proud to attend as a student. My time to student teaching at Echo has been incredible, and it hurts me profoundly to see where we are today. Echo Canyon is a school of choice, bringing in 42% of our student population from outside of SUSD boundaries. When Dr. Menzel told us that he would not push a Hopey-Echo merger, he said it was because if he lost 10 unhappy Hopey families, it would cost the district thousands. Echo has already lost more than a dozen families due to turmoil with the district and potential closure. Regardless of what the next steps are for Echo Canyon, the management and communication by the superintendent surrounding the situation has had a lasting impact, not only on myself, but also on other future teachers in my cohort who will graduate and are set to enter the classroom next school year in the midst of a teacher shortage. Dr. Menzel has been unable to provide us with answers, not for a lack of transparency, but due to a lack of vision that has left me uncertain in the future of this district as a whole. He is not playing to win, he is playing not to lose. SUSD families deserve more. They deserve more than someone who leaves solutions unexplored. They deserve a leader who believes and invests in the future of public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Bonier, followed by John Aiden.
Hello, board. My name is Emily. I am a Scottsdale School District alumni, as well as resident, and I have my daughter with me, who is in our preschool pre-K program. I just want to say the closure of Echo Canyon is devastating. You need to take into effect the kids' well-being, the community, being the families, the people around the school. As many have said, Echo Canyon is a family. When we entered Echo Canyon this year with my daughter, I am floored by the amazingness of this school. Kids' mental and emotional well-being is going to be greatly impacted if they have to separate their friendships and their trust that they have with their school and their support systems. We have an amazing staff, a looping technique that helps the kids grow mentally, as well as curriculum-wise. Closing these schools forces these kids to go to other schools, other districts, charter schools. Separating friendships increases travel times, which is a distance and a burden for families. You pride yourself on Blue Zone, we're Blue Watermelon, we have gardens, so they're learning not a curriculum, but also a life skills. We have reading with family, which brings families and children together. We have the Early Start, which is wonderful for parents like me that have to go to work early in the morning and need to be able to drop off their kids and not have the financial burden of preschool payments. The biggest thing is by closing these schools, you're putting them in these other classes that are already full, which is going to be a problem that these children are going to get lost, and they're just going to be one number, and they're not going to get the attention they need. We need to advertise for our schools, we need to come up with a way to figure out the deficit, maybe partner with other Blue Zone organizations like Honor Health or somebody to give us funding.
Thank you. John Aiden, followed by Bob Jones.
Hi, my name is John Aiden. I'm a Tavon-Inglewood Arcadia alum and a proud Pima parent. The district has yet to present a case on why closing Pima now makes sense when three other schools in South Scottsdale, Yavapai, Tonalea, and Coronado, are also struggling with enrollment. The district will want you to believe that splitting up Pima's boundaries between Hoakum and Yavapai could boost Yavapai's enrollment, and by forcing the boundaries of the Pima neighborhood to one of those two schools will subsequently boost Tonalea's middle-school enrollment. Please know this will not happen. Most of Pima's boundaries have a closer proximity to Mojave, and most parents will continue to send their children to Mojave for middle school and Suoro for high school. This is not a new trend and will not be reversed by closing Pima and changing its boundaries to schools south of them. We can address Pima's enrollment concerns, as well as some of the other South Scottsdale schools, by changing Boundary 10C section, the Paiute neighborhood, from Tavon-Inglewood Arcadia to Pima-Tonalea-Coronado. 10C has a high density of students and could boost Pima's enrollment to a safe zone. Tavon currently has a healthy enrollment total and could likely handle the loss of students. Tavon can mitigate the loss of students because they're able to recruit from all the various Phoenix school districts. The proximity of 10C to Tonalea will be the driving factor on why parents in this section will send their children to Tonalea to middle school versus Mojave. I understand this change alone does not fix the budget shortfall the district is facing, but we need to consider ideas like this if we want to keep schools in South Scottsdale from closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Jones, followed by Gina Aiden.
I'm a concerned citizen, and I've watched a plethora of very emotional families bearing disappointment on their faces over this very serious situation. I watched this gentleman read a really heavy statement earlier, and you're elected officials, basically civil servants with a responsibility. And I've watched a lot of people attack you, saying that you're not being truthful with them and not keeping your word. That's character. That's character of all of you. And character means a lot. And we, as neighbors, it goes outside the school. There was an underage girl hauled away in an ambulance for alcohol poisoning from a rave party at Mr. Petinsky's house. This is not good character to make calls on who's going to open and close schools. Paradise Valley Police Department had to shut this mess down, and our neighborhood had a mess from it. It was quite the scene. You guys are here because you were elected by the entire community to do what's right. So please do so.
Thank you. Gina Aiden, followed by Rose Smith.
Hi, I'm Gina Aiden. My husband and I moved to South Scottsdale over 20 years ago. Proud parents of one Pima grad and one current Panther. I appreciate the attention that the board members have given to this issue. It's difficult. There's been some confusion about whether or not the decision to close Echo and Pima are joined on the same vote. If they are not, I think there's an argument to be made for bifurcation, as Echo and Pima are both beloved schools and deserve to be given the attention of a separate vote. There are a slew of obvious reasons that Pima is worth further consideration. We've heard so many of them tonight. There have been logical solutions presented on how to move forward without closing Pima. I would like to address the potential negative mental health outcomes stemming from school closures. Research shows direct correlation to students' academic achievement and overall mental health, impacting the way children view the importance of themselves, the shaping of their academic identity, and the value that we place on community. As a social worker specializing in mental health and traumatic crisis, I understand the long-term impact that disruption during the formative elementary years has on children. As a parent, I, like many of us, have seen the impact that discussions and concerns surrounding school closures have had on our children in just the last several weeks. Many of us have been calming fears and finding creative and often diplomatic ways to explain to our kids the concepts like low enrollment, budget shortfalls, when what they're seeing is grownups contemplating making decisions that will potentially cause upheaval in their lives and their neighborhood and in their community. The email we received said that Pima made the list of repurposing due to a shortfall of four. I think we owe it to school, staff, students, and Pima community to slow this crazy train down just a little bit, so we can analyze this very important decision at the macro level, ensure that it makes sense in the long term for all of South Scottsdale, and we've got Panther pride, and this is our rally.
Thank you. Rose Smith, followed by Grace Strombrass.
Once again, I'm asking this board to consider transitioning to an arts magnet rather than close Echo Canyon School. This would leverage Scottsdale's cultural identity to reverse enrollment decline and elevate achievement. Our fine arts magnet could draw over 150 new students in year one through open enrollment and targeted marketing. With Scottsdale's art-rich community, Old Town Galleries, ASU partnerships, and our own award-winning performing arts and bands, this magnet school will be a true destination. Located at the heart of three towns and having the support of those mayors, Echo Canyon is ready to repurpose and reinvent itself and keep its gardens. Families will choose us over charters, as SUSD stands on decades of academic excellence and can support their children through their entire K-12 experience. Arts integration boosts outcome. Research shows 3% to 5% gains in math and ELA when course subjects are taught through music, drama, and visual arts. Our magnet school will weave fine arts into every classroom while offering specialized tracks and career pathways for Arizona's creative jobs. Mesa, PV, Phoenix, Tempe, Tucson, and Dyson, to name a few, all have elementary arts magnet programs. Actually, an arts magnet model is more aligned to the original vision of ANLC, which predates Echo Canyon. Please stop focusing on closing schools and instead focus on growing schools, and me sharpening our pencils and putting on our thinking caps to offer signature program. By establishing an arts academy, we will grow enrollment, ignite achievement, and define excellence. Let's focus on innovative thinking to retain and attract students to the number-one district in Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Grace Strombrass, followed by Carrie Eves.
Good evening. I am a retired administrator at SUSD and an SUSD legacy. Board President Donna Lewis, you campaigned on transparency, collaboration, and community input. You promised a budget committee and broad surveys before any cuts. None of this has happened. Yet, you're proposing to close Pima and Echo Canyon first. Closing schools is the wrong starting point. It accelerates enrollment loss as families flee to charters or neighboring districts, worsening our financial crisis. Instead, let's strengthen our district and attract families with innovative, choice-driven programs. Declining birth rates are a challenge statewide, but Scottsdale families crave choice. Innovative programs draw new students without displacing children already enrolled at Echo and Pima. For example, we can transform Echo into a fine arts magnet. Similar programs elsewhere boosted enrollment 20% to 50%. Reposition Pima with career-aligned themes: community helpers, safety awareness, basic first aid and career exploration in health services, fire, and police, creating a pathway to Tonalea and Coronado's programs. This could easily draw 50 to 150 new students. Adopt lean, flexible staffing models at all schools and district departments, using multi-role educators to cut overhead without multi-role educators to cut overhead without losing quality. Closures cost millions in transitions and fracture communities. Innovation builds enrollment, revenue, and trust. Honor your commitments. Activate the budget committee. Gather broad community input. Vote to keep Pima and Echo Canyon open. Thank you for your leadership and your promise to save our schools.
Thank you. Carrie Eves, followed by Matt Gress. Carrie, are you here? Carrie Eves, all right. Representative Matt Gress.
Good evening. Thank you, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, and members of the governing board. My name is Matt Gress, and I have the privilege to represent the fourth legislative district, which includes Scottsdale. We all understand the broader reality that Arizona has fewer students, and districts are being asked to make difficult decisions to align spending with enrollment. I don't minimize that challenge. But after visiting Pima last year and Echo Canyon this morning, and hearing directly from staff, students, and families, it's clear that a decision of this significance requires a fuller public understanding of the options at the table. School closures permanently sever relationships and reshape neighborhoods. They should never be presented as the only option without the public seeing every other alternative: redesigns, consolidations, leases, and property sales, along with the real costs and savings of each. To date, that information has not been made publicly, and that is a serious failure in the process. In my role as chairman of the Education Committee, I'll be requesting a full briefing of Superintendent Menzel to understand the underlying data and analysis, because from the outside, it appears that the district is just managing decline. Several thoughtful ideas were raised tonight that appear worth exploring. I hope those perspectives will be part of a broader review, rather than dismiss too early in the process. Presenting one path and calling it inevitable is not fair to families and the community we serve. I'll finally note that the districts have almost no flexibility with regard to capital, which is why I'll advance emergency legislation next January to allow districts to sell property and reinvest those dollars in students. Finally, beginning the closure process before the demographic study has been completed and reviewed appears premature, and I respectfully urge the board to consider the process before closure. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Graves, Martha Graves, followed by Timothy Murphy.
Hello, my name is Martha Graves. I have two children. One is a Pima graduate, and one is still at Pima, and I myself am a product of the Scottsdale Unified School District. I spoke at this board meeting last month, and I'm here today with the same questions and not many more answers. It's apparent that the district as a whole has issues that need to be addressed, but closing Pima with no plan isn't the answer, and it doesn't make sense. Closing Pima and Echo just puts a bandaid on the problem. More students and families will leave the district because it doesn't correct the underlying problems, nor does it redirect the district as a whole in a direction in which it can succeed. Closing two schools and electing a wait-and-see approach for the remaining schools doesn't make any sense. The schools listed on the Phase Two portion at least have some advance notice that they have issues that need to be addressed, and it feels like they at least have some more support from the board and the community, because they were given that courtesy of knowing what might be coming down. We at Pima were not, and our children were not. It almost goes without saying, after hearing so many other speakers, but the staff and the faculty at Pima are incomparable, and their genuine, caring, and impactful nature shapes our kids in the best way possible. I implore you to examine the district as a whole and to make thorough and thought-out decisions. Closing Pima and Echo right now simply doesn't make sense. There isn't enough data to support specifically closing Pima, especially considering it is an A-rated school and offers numerous unique services for its students. Take the time for the community, for our children, and for your constituents that we deserve.
Thank you. Timothy Murphy, followed by Emmy Cardella.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tim Murphy. I've lived in Scottsdale School District my entire life. I feel like my comments might pale in comparison to many of the parents here tonight, fighting to keep their kids' schools open. However, I wish to offer another important perspective to illustrate how closing these schools affects not just teachers and students that attend there, but the community at large. I'm the oldest of six children that grew up just blocks away from Echo Canyon, then called Kaibab. Along with my siblings, I played Little League on the ballfields located at Echo Canyon. Over years of playing T-ball, farm, and minors, I saw the community gather at these fields, and children learned virtues of competition and sportsmanship. I made lifelong friends and learned some of the most important life lessons playing baseball. Now, as a father myself of six small children, I get to watch the next generation learn these same virtues, playing on these very same fields. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the Echo Canyon ballfields are the softball field serving all the young ladies of the Arcadia Little League. And if the school had to close, the league has warned us that they will cease to offer girls softball altogether, and hundreds of girls, including my three daughters, will find themselves unable to play. Echo Canyon's been a neighborhood center for my entire life, affecting thousands of families and kids over the years in countless ways. Please consider all other options to you before closing or repurposing this school. I know you've heard a lot of, heard over and over tonight that you have better options, and I implore you to figure it out. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Emmy Cardella, followed by Doug Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Emmy Cardella. I have been a parent for 16 years, and I also attended SUSD K through 12. So I am acutely aware of the demographic shifts in our district, and I think this conversation is long overdue, and I share a lot of the frustration that some board members expressed at the study session, that boards of the past haven't dealt with the long-term sustainability of our district. You know, our district sits in Paradise Valley, Arcadia, and then the southern half of Scottsdale. Paradise Valley and Arcadia have been built out for decades. And then Scottsdale, the vast majority of the growth has been in the northern part of our city, which is Cave Creek and Paradise Valley School District. So there's simply, the demographics do not support. This is what the studies of the past several years have been showing us. The new study will not show anything different. I've also been attending meetings for years and paying very close attention, and I've seen each year the deeper and deeper cuts and the creative ways that money has been saved. One example, last year, half of the teacher raise was paid out of cash reserves, which is one-time money, which is the definition of unsustainable. So we are at a place now when we have no other options. And I completely understand the fight of the parents that are fighting for their schools, and they deserve an explanation of why those are the first ones. I know that is, tonight's not the night for that, and I hope that that comes, and I know it will at the next meeting, but the key point there, that these are the first ones, that there is more to do, that this is part of a bigger plan, and that Scottsdale really needs a lot of effort to put in to make sure that we're being sustainable for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Anderson, followed by David Redkey.
Hello, good evening. Thank you. I have two boys, one at Pima, second grade, and one at Ho Okum, because the pre-K program at Pima was shut down. Lots already been said, but I'm here to tell you that this could have been handled a lot better. It's kind of disappointing, to be honest with you. From the start, proactive communication with parents was worthy of a failing grade. From what I've concluded, the only solution ever considered or explored was the closing of schools. It was a starting point, and it does feel like Dr. Menzel is playing to not lose, not to win, instead of playing to win. I don't argue the financial hardship. We know it's true. But you have the opportunity to truly explore solutions other than closing of schools or closures-focused. We would have loved to have seen evidence of a think tank to solve this. As somebody with 25 years of creative problem solving, I feel that if you had led with empathy for children and parents, you would have found a financial solution. Starting with financial solutions, you lose the children and families. Looking forward, what are you going to do proactively? Seems everything's reactive. There are more schools in sight of closure. What are you going to do about that? Continue to close schools? I kind of liken it to laying in the snow, getting frost-bitten. You're freezing, and you're cutting off limbs with every school closure. It's time to get out of the snow. Fix it. It's your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Andrew Chaney. Did I miss David? My apologies.
Did someone before?
I think so. I apologize. David, was that just you, right? Oh, here you are. I'm so sorry. Got confused. All right, David, you're next. Thank you.
Okay. I'm David Redkey. I am a congressional candidate for Arizona's first congressional district, and I'm here today going door-to-door, especially this weekend. I spoke to parents from both school districts, as well as students. I had a little girl come up to me and ask me, "Please don't close down Echo Canyon. Please don't let it happen." And because of that, I'm here today to stand up for her and speak out that closing her schools, closing any school, is the worst thing you can do right now. You're talking about lowering, like, enrollment? That's just going to accelerate it, as many people said. There's many ways you could actually take money away from other programs that are not needed and use it and make sure Echo Canyon and Pima Elementary stay open. You don't have to close these schools down, and you don't have to rob these students of their friendships, of their choice, of their ability to have a lasting memory of Scottsdale Unified School District. What they're going to see is that the school district doesn't even care about them. Scottsdale Unified School District doesn't want to stand up for them? If I ever go back and talk to many more students, I'm going to have to tell them that specifically Scottsdale Unified School District does not care about them. They're just a number to them. They're not people, and that's just going to accelerate this exodus of students. You should make it a place of prosperity, where people can grow, come and learn. This is not something that you should be discussing. You shouldn't even think about closing a school. You should think about more logical solutions than forcing students to leave the elementary school and the middle schools that they are known for for their whole lives. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, my apologies. Andrew Chaney is our final speaker this evening.
Thank you all for your public service and for the other public servants in the room. My name's Andrew Chaney. I've got two points. First, so my night and weekend job is, I'm a dad, and I've got three kids, two in SUSD right now, one next year, get ready for them. And on nights and weekends, I'm with my daughter at the softball fields at Echo Canyon and helping raise other strong daughters around in the community. And so it's not only important to the community, but also these daughters. And I don't think having, getting rid of these would affect those fields, and I don't think any of us need any weaker daughters around here. My day job is commercial real estate brokerage, and I help place a lot of companies in Scottsdale. Last week, I was out touring 100,000 square foot headquarters, who's looking between our region and other regions on the East Coast. Scottsdale does have a good chance to get this group, but having them hear headlines about closing schools, that's not going to reflect well on us. It's making Scottsdale less competitive, and so there's certainly a big impact, and I encourage you all to look at this holistically on the business sense as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to adjournment, I just want to give each board member an opportunity to say thank you, and while this is not the time for summary comments or any responses, I know each of you would like to share your appreciation. Dr. Petinsky.
Yes, I want to say thank you. I know it's difficult at night to come out. We have families, and this has been incredibly helpful. We've talked about potential alternatives and solutions. We've talked about process feedback. Most of all, we've just talked about how much we love our schools and the impact of making a difficult decision like this to close a school and what it has. So I just want to say thank you, everyone, for the feedback. I don't take this decision lightly, and I promise to continue to listen and learn as we ultimately shape a budget that will serve all of Scottsdale Unified School District families from the south of the district to the north. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Warner.
Thank you. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight and speaking and sharing your ideas, and my request is that if you've not already emailed your thoughts and ideas to us, if you would email them to us, and that way we can go through them and hopefully come up with some really good ideas instead of what's being presented to us. Thank you.
Member Carney.
I'd just like to thank every one of you who came out to speak tonight, to support those who were speaking, not only tonight. You took time away from your families, right, and all the outgoing in your busy lives, and you came last meeting and spoke. You've emailed. I thank those that have requested to meet with me, that I've been able to have face-to-face conversations with. I take this very seriously, and I appreciate your input and will be focused on that. There are two requests that I do have. One is that I would like to request from Dr. Menzel.
I don't know if we can do that and look into the attorney. I want to make sure parliamentarily-wise we're on point.
Madam President, Ms. Carney, if you wouldn't mind emailing your requests of follow-up, because we don't have that methodology listed out within the statute for a public hearing. And I did send an email on this today. You might not have had a chance to read it. So if you don't mind emailing your request to Dr. Menzel, I'll make sure that they are followed up on. Thank you.
That's fine, but I'm just asking for a compiled list of the public comments with solutions so that the board can look at it, but I will email my advice.
Thank you, and I apologize, Ms. Carney.
Mr. Sharkey.
Thank you from me as well, for everyone who came out. Especially want to thank the parents that I've met with. I see many of them here. We've met in evenings and mornings for coffee. You've brought wonderful information and options to me, and I appreciate the homework you've done. I've been doing the same. I've been compiling information. I've been compiling data, and so hopefully that comes out as we talk about this. And you know that I take this seriously, as I've talked to many of you face-to-face. So thank you again for being here and expressing your emotions for you and your family.
I, too, would like to say that the marvelous creativity and suggestions for growth and ideas for our students across our 18,000 students is really valuable. I really appreciate hearing them. I echo what my colleagues here at the DAIS have said. In terms of your time, we continue to listen and consider. So thank you for a wonderful evening, and with that, I make a motion to adjourn. Any second?
A second to the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.